And then after that, Scott here.
Haven't seen him yet.
Jenica, would you lead us in the pledge then? If Scott's not here, thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to be able to be here today and to be able to do the work of the people. Father, we're grateful for this land and for the many opportunities it gives us. Please bless us during this this season as we go into Christmas that we might be able to be considerate of others and be able to serve those who are in need. Father, please bless us this year, especially because of the pandemic that we've been dealing with, that we might be able to help one another and be able to get through these things, be able to move on and make our society better. Father, we're grateful for those men and women who service in our emergency services and please guard and protect them. Please bless all our men and women in the armed services as they serve and protect us abroad and here at home. Father, again, we are grateful for this opportunity which we have to be able to to build and grow as a community and be able to to do those things to help our future generations. And again, we're grateful for this land we live in and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Thank you, Jenica. Thanks for filling in. Just to make a note, I should have probably said this when we started, we do have Commissioner Summers on the line as well as Attorney Steve Hatfield. So they are on the call. And so. So just be aware that they are they are on the phone will be commenting with us, so. Looks like we need to approve the approve the minutes from the December 2nd meeting.
I'd make a motion that we approve our minutes from December 2nd.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Any form or agenda items? Or? I guess, do you have any more COVID numbers or information, Commissioner Scott?
It's getting a little better. The the numbers are stabilizing a little bit, but you know, obviously, we're still in a an uptick. And so we just want to make sure that everybody's staying safe so that we, you know, again, don't overload the hospitals and that's that's the biggest concern right now, so. The first rounds of vaccine have started to go out and they've got an order that they're doing that, they're getting it out to the frontline people first. And so that's going to be your your nurses, your ER folks, first responders, so mostly the medical facilities. And then I believe after that, it's going to start going to the the more vulnerable populations. And they're anticipating by probably February or March, it will be more available to the other general public. So the success rate that that I'm hearing or that they've seen in the clinical tests is ninety-four, ninety-five percent plus effective. So we're hoping that that being safe will take care of this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Great. Do you have anything to add, Commissioner Summers?
I don't.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
All right. Well, with that, we'll move on here to our first item. We are we're grateful that he's here with us today. We have Congressman Rob Bishop here with us. And I'll let Stan, you want to explain what we're what we're doing here with him?
Yeah.
Thanks, Scott.
Rob, the reason I'm calling in is because you told me if I ever did this, you'd beat me, so I'm just letting you know that that's what I'm most afraid of, is just being there and having you take care of me for doing this. But we thought it was amazing how much you've done for not only District One, but for Box Elder County. And we just wanted to honor you today by not only naming the Bay Trail or renaming the Bay Trail, the Bishop's Bay Trail, that will go from the James V Hanson clear down to around Willard Bay, so from from this moment forward. And I'll let one of those guys read the resolution. And then they've got a couple of things I know you'll enjoy, so just we can't say enough about how you've brought us along in the political side of things and how much you've been able to do for us, so. As for this, Commissioner, I appreciate everything, so I'm sure the other guys would like to say something, too.
I'll I'll let Commissioner Scott say something and he can read the resolution if you want.
That'd be great.
You bet. Resolution number twenty dash twenty-six, a resolution of the Box Elder County Commission naming the planned trail from Willard Bay State Park to the James V Hanson Wildlife Education Center at the Bay River Migratory Bird Refuge, the Bishop Bay Trail, in honor of Congressman Rob Bishop. Whereas on October eighteenth, twenty seventeen, the Box Elder County Commission adopted the southeastern Box Elder County Active Transportation Plan. And whereas the southeastern Box Elder County Active Transportation Plan includes a proposed twelve-and-a-half-mile bay trail extending from Willard Bay State Park to the James V Hanson Wildlife Education Center at the Bay River Migratory Bird Refuge. And whereas to honor and thank Congressman Rob Bishop for his service to the state of Utah and Box Elder County, especially his dedication towards public lands issues, the Box Elder County Commission desires to name said bay trail the Bishop Bay Trail. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Box Elder County Commission, acting as the legislative body of Box Elder County, state of Utah. We're renaming it. I guess we need to take a formal vote, but I I can't tell you how much I've appreciated working with Congressman Bishop and and his staff from from the day that that we've been in office. If there's ever been a question, we've literally been able to text or call him and and he responds. It's it's refreshing. And he has not changed. He changed Washington, DC. He didn't let let Washington, DC change him, and I think that's the biggest tribute that you can pay to somebody that has served back there in in Congress. And so I'd echo what Commissioner Summers said, we we appreciate his his tireless service to the nation and especially to hometown Box Elder County.
And I'd I'd like to to echo that. I one of my one of my memories of being back in Washington, DC was, I think, year before last, Commissioner Summers and I actually had the opportunity to be able to, we had we got the opportunity to be able to sit in and listen to Congressman Bishop really throttle a few of these people about some of the offshore drilling and and some of the hypocrisy that was going on there. And it was just, it was very masterful and I really grew an appreciation for some of his craft and what he has to do there in order to be able to to speak up and stand up against some of the things that that are being thrown out there. And it was it was pretty neat. And I I know Commissioner Summers had said the same thing, it was it was neat to be there and and be able to watch. But again, I want to thank you, too, for your service and representing not just our our district, but also our county. And and the accessibility to you has been great and we've really appreciated and enjoyed that, so. And we wish you the best of luck as you as you move forward with with your future plans. With that, I guess I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-six adopting adopting the Bishop's Bay Trail in honoring Congressman Rob Bishop.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers and a second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now with that, we also, we have a couple of things we want to present to Congressman Bishop. And so if you'll come forward, we'd like to.
See if there's anything, see if there's anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, we'll we'll give him a chance to say something.
Tell him the socks were Commissioner Scott's idea.
Okay. We'd like to present to you this walking stick and Stan had that engraved on there with Bishop Trail. And we know that you don't own a pair of socks and we felt like it was really important that you should have some. So we got you some Abraham Lincoln socks and then you know you love to wear hats, so we got you a Box Elder County hat as well. Anyway, if there's anything that you'd like to to say, like, about it.
Yeah, this is like, I don't deserve this, I appreciate it very much. Stan, I just want you to know I'm wearing the stupid mask you already gave me. So it's it's the cow and I'm doing that just in your honor. I appreciate it, I should, I will keep the socks cherished and Abraham Lincoln will probably never get dirty, I can promise that. And this is a surprise and you realize that somebody is now going to ask you what ward is Bishop Bay in charge. Thank you. Really, this is, we didn't need to do it. I don't think I'm worthy of it, but thank you. And I just appreciate what the commission does and I appreciate its candidacy. And and all the the people that I have met in Box Elder County on the way. So thank you.
Your service will also thank you. We also want to thank Congressman Bishop's family for being here, too. They're they're here in the back of the room with him. So I better get my eyes back on here so I can see. Okay. Looks like we're to Tom.
Always a danger.
But we're not quite here to, I guess Tom can preface and get us a little bit of little bit of info here before we start the public hearing. Thanks, you guys.
Yeah, it's, I guess, add my appreciation to Congressman Bishop. He was my Little League baseball coach. We won the championship that year, I believe, highlight of my athletic career. And then years later, he was also my high school teacher, did an internship with him down at the state when he was a lobbyist down there. And then also worked back in his DC office, so I saw pretty up close that his determination and will to help the different communities. As far as the agenda item I have is for the public hearing, we are going to amend the twenty twenty budget. That is mostly due to the money we've received from the state for the CARES, the Coronavirus Relief Fund. The state has sent down to the county around five point, not around, five point seven million dollars, so we are now increasing the budget by that amount. The county is planning to spend the entirety of that money through different projects and also wages for public safety employees who qualify for it, for being frontline workers. Since we hadn't opened the budget for that, there were a few accounts that we also adjusted. One was the Public Defender Budget. We have increased that budget significantly and a lot of that's coming also from the state through their grant program that the county is participating in. So we increased that. And then there were just a few accounts here and there. We had to increase our litigation costs for centrally assessed as the county has continued with the the railroad Union Pacific centrally assessed appeal, it continues to go forward. But really, that's it. The the main obvious part is the five point seven from the state for COVID, so.
Okay. And with that, it's ten, or eleven forty-five, so I will go ahead and open our our public hearing for the twenty twenty amended budget. If there's anyone that would like to speak to to this topic, please come up and state your name in the mic and please do so. If there's anyone that would like to speak to it?
Deanna Hardy Brigham. I know you don't like repetition, but I'm going to oppose the budget. Is it past four forty-three point eight million now with his increases? Is it more now? Can Tom say anything about that?
With adding the CARES Act money?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that's what he's doing to the budget is is he's adding that money in.
So it's more than forty-three point eight million?
From last year's budget? I don't.
No, from what he proposed.
No, we're we're looking at at twenty twenties budget, not twenty twenty ones.
Oh, okay.
This is amending twenty twenties.
Okay. Still, I would like to say that I oppose the budget. I know that's why, one reason why you shut down public comment, because you said I say the same over and over again, but liberty is eternal vigilance. And so I'm here as a citizen to oppose it. The COVID money that's coming in, this money still comes from the citizens, it comes out of our pockets. I'm opposed to the increases that you're making to all these different departments. In two thousand twelve, the county's budget was twenty-nine million and now we're up to forty-three point eight million. I'd be interested to see, since the county was established, how fast that budget increased to twenty-nine million in two thousand twelve. All this money that you receive comes out of our pocket. We don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. We have a government that's getting too big and it's hurting the people. And this COVID is hurting the people. The goal was to shut down small businesses, which is the backbone of this country. And we need to stand up and help fight for them. So I know you'll just ignore me, but I still have to stand and fight for liberty, so thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak about the amendment to the twenty twenty budget? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the amended budget for twenty twenty. Oh, yeah. I guess we need to make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty amended budget as outlined by our auditor, Tom Cottler.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And Tom left, but I was going to thank Tom for his work. Thank you, Tom. Wherever you're at. Okay. Looks like, is Margaret here? Do you want to just state your name in the microphone for the record?
Margaret Smith.
Okay. So how are you doing? Tell us why you're here.
Well, thank you. Should I keep this on or off?
It's it's up to you.
Okay.
I mean, we're six feet apart, so.
Okay. Question again, Jeff. This is a little bit more impressive than I thought.
Just tell us, just give us a brief description of why you're here.
So what our purpose is in coming is that when we went to pay our taxes this year and we, I I will go back, so we have been basically out of the county now for, well, we've been actually out of the state for about six and a half years because we've been serving missions for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And so our home address on Box Elder County, where we had our only home, was from a previous address in Logan dating back to prior to leaving, you know, back to at least sixteen. We did own the home there and our children were staying in it from fourteen till sixteen. And so we didn't get mail to that address at all and I've just gone online and done all of our bills online, trying to go green as well as simply because our address continued to change every several months. And so when we went to pay our taxes, we noticed, we expected a little increase because that's just how it goes with property taxes. And it was almost a thousand, I think it was like nine fifty-eight, increased. And so I went ahead and paid it simply because that's what we do. And then I contacted the commission or the what, I don't even know what it's called.
Assessor's office.
Assessor's office. And they they indicated that there had been a new bill passed by the state that for residences, where you can only have one residence as a primary residence and that you get a decrease in your actual property taxes. We only have one residence and have done for several years. But because my, and and that's our fault, our address was listed as a Logan address on our property tax. And that was, that was an error, I was doing everything online, so honestly, I didn't even really know where our property taxes were going to because I just did it online. Apparently, three letters were sent. Our names came up because our address on file, even though the previous year, the check that came would have had our correct address on. And there were three things that apparently alerted them. So an address that was outside of the home address or the property address, which was our account. They sent three letters to that same address, supposedly is what they say, and I I don't doubt that they did that. I never received an answer back, of course, because that wasn't our address. I did contact the post office system and said, okay, under these circumstances, what should have happened to those letters? And they all should have been returned. They state that they didn't get any back, so again, he said, she said, I don't know because we never saw any letters. But because they didn't receive anything, then they put the residents in Box Elder County as a secondary residence and they charged us that extra almost thousand dollars, even though we didn't have a first primary residence in Cache County. How that, again, yes, we had the wrong address and I will take, that was my fault. But it seems to me that with a decision that big all of a sudden coming forth, that either a call to Cache County could have handled that because they could have asked what that res, who owned that residence. Secondly, it seems like a letter should have gone to the property. We were actually physically at the property during the time that the first two letters went out because of COVID. We weren't able to be serving during those two months of, I believe, one went out in April and one again in, or yes, April and June. And we would have gotten both of those letters. And our son actually is living in our home now and gives us all of the mail that we get from the Box Elder County. Second one would have been, if there had been a registered letter ever sent, that one would have also done. There were three things that they did say that alerted them to possible dual property ownership. And one was a a driver's license. Our driver's licenses were correct, they had on there the correct addresses. We also have voting in Box Elder County, so we had two of the three. It was the third one, so it was kind of, and again, why it didn't, wasn't returned, I don't know, or why they didn't send to our property. So we're basically asking for forgiveness, that's kind of a swipe in the face for seniors to have that big of an increase when you're anticipating less. We did get it fixed once we realized the problem and the auditor said that he just couldn't do anything about it for this year, but for next year, we'll be okay. So I guess we're just pleading, we goofed, we made a mistake, I don't know if there's anything you can do to help us.
Well, no, I I appreciate the the insight on that. As far as, I I can't speak for the assessor's office because I know that they have certain protocol and and things that they have to go through, too, as well. I know it's difficult for for Rod's office to try and be following up on on everyone and and, you know, trying to, you know, they can't be researching, trying to find everybody's correct address. So they're relying on people to to get those, get those changed. Rod, do you want to, do you want to come up and and basically give us any insight from the assessor's office on this particular case?
I think the biggest thing is, is that this was that SB thirteen which required us to send out letters to, set it out, what had to be in the letters, what our timeframes were. We actually fought against this bill as the Assessors Association. The bill was passed in the two thousand nineteen legislature, they gave us a deadline of May first of twenty twenty to send these letters because we were hoping that we could change their minds and get them to quit doing this. We actually didn't send it out until May timeframe, but we had to at that point. Then it's very specific in what we are required to do. One, send out the letters. Two, send out a follow-up letter. Three, send up, send out the letter that says we are going to be changing and what the change will be. We also fought with that bill and we were successful in getting that if they come to the appeals, the Board of Equalizations, that we could still change them if they could show us this proof of residencies, the driver's, and and we have talked about this.
He's helped me get it for next year.
The other problem that we had with that is there was never an appeal. So the first we hear of it was in November, December.
Property tax.
Yeah. Yeah, the end of November, I think, is when we talked. So the problem comes down to the fact that the law is very specific in what we are required to do. We don't have any options to that. Yes, we are trying to take care of it for for other years and I think we've got that taken care of, I think we've had some communication with that, but.
You mentioned, too, before, Rod, didn't you, that property taxes were, or they were increased some, so they would have, they would have gone up anyway a little bit.
Some would have, yes, every property changed because valuations changed.
But do we know, what what is the exact amount or the difference between what, I guess, had this been taken care of, what they would have paid versus what they did? Do we know?
I think from what you told me, I think it was like nine hundred fifty-eight, ten. I don't know if I put that on the paper.
That was in the the email?
Yeah.
I I have never.
I totally appreciate, it just seems like the system, whether it came from the state, it seems like the property address should have gotten some notice. To me, it was, if the address was wrong, it doesn't matter how many notices you send to the wrong address, especially when it's never, shouldn't have reached there, it should have been sent back.
And again.
And that's a government office, I don't know why it did send it back.
That's, I'm I'm not sure, do they have that protocol, Rod, where they send it to the physical address at some point in time?
We did, if we had returned addresses, if we had any that were returned to us, we did send them to the SITUS address in addition to the addresses that they were there.
But nothing was returned then, obviously.
She said.
Have to go back and look.
She said she looked and she did not have any record, but then the post office says that they would have returned them. So I don't know, we never saw any of the three notices, so I don't know.
Okay. I don't have the email.
No, we spoke on the phone, but yeah, I have a.
I think I've got it in my book, do you want me to, is it okay if I just?
Hey, Jeff and Jeff, this is Stan. Did we ever find out if they were actually charged taxes in Cache County also?
I don't believe that they would have because that house was subsequently sold, is that correct?
Oh, it was sold in sixteen and again in eighteen, it's been twice sold since.
You were charged for a secondary property, but yet you don't have a secondary property, is that correct?
We haven't done for four years.
Is that, is that right, Rod?
Trying to get at Scott, thanks.
The requirement is that you live in the home for a minimum of a hundred and eighty-three days out of the calendar year to be able to get a residential exemption.
Okay.
The state law requires a hundred and eighty-three consecutive days out of the year to get that exemption. So if you live somewhere else more than half of the year, you're not qualified for that exemption.
Obviously, serving a mission somewhere else would
It would negate quite a few people.
Not allow you to live a hundred and eighty. So. So.
It came to nine fifty-six eleven because it was forty-five percent deduction was the difference we paid.
Okay.
So it was twenty-one, twenty-four, sixty-eight. And if you take forty-five percent of that.
What was it again? Twenty-one?
Twenty-one, twenty-four, and sixty-eight cents.
Okay. Um, I, you know, it's, I, I, I see, I see both sides of it here, and I understand your, your plight. And I also understand where Rod has to basically function under the rules in this SB thirteen and as much as he doesn't like it. You know, in, in light of the fact you got, you know, you, you have been serving missions and stuff, I'm willing to make an adjustment. I don't know that I would say, you know, I would forgive everything, but we could make an adjustment and maybe have a compromise somewhere.
Anything would help.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I don't know how you two feel about it.
No, I mean, I would echo what you said. It's, it's frustrating what they've done coming down with, you know, kind of these mandates from the legislature, and they don't take the input that comes from the offices that are tasked with administering this. Because, I mean, it is, it is extremely difficult, and you met two of the three criteria, as, you know, Mr. Bennett explained. It just happened that, you know, with circumstances, you didn't, didn't receive these notices and didn't know that you had the ability to, to appeal this. And it is truly your primary residence. It's not a secondary. You don't have another one. Is there any allowance at all in the code for somebody if this is their permanent residence, but they happen to be serving either in the military or for a charitable service?
There is a military, but no other.
Interesting.
Which does put it, it does make it difficult because really, it does not qualify as a primary residence anyway. We have tried not to punish people, obviously, for serving missions or being gone, but it's, that is what the requirement is.
Yeah.
So what would the tax have been if they would have, if she would have told you that they'd sold the property? So that's my concern is that we're basically taxing them on something that really wasn't there.
Just doing this in my head. I think it would have been around one thousand one seventy-five. So I think the forty-five percent exemption amounted to a nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eleven cents. That's the extra that they picked up because they didn't have the primary residence exemption.
Just for clarification purposes, this has nothing to do with another house and another property. We never claimed that they owned another house and another property. That's just where the mailing address was, so we.
Right.
It's, it's a hundred and eighty, eighty-four day, the rule that you're talking about.
Yep.
Okay.
So an individual cannot own a home if they're, I mean, it sounds, I thought every person could have a primary residence.
You can. The way this bill was written, and this is the flaw that, that Assessor Bennett's pointed out, is the fact that they made an exemption for military, but there is no exemption for somebody that's serving a charitable, like, mission or something like that for, to be able to, they're required to be in that residence for so many, so many days in order to make it their primary.
See, my understanding, and again, I got this from Mr. Bennett, was that they were trying to, they, it didn't have so much with the primary. They didn't want people owning two homes and claiming the deduction for both homes.
I think.
And I thought that was the principal reason. Maybe I misunderstood that.
I think it was the intent behind the bill. Is that right, Rod?
That was the intent, but this is a different.
Now, it gets messy. This bill has nothing to do, even though we were required to implement this bill, this bill has nothing to do with real property taxes. This was an income tax bill that was used, the assessors were basically used to enforce. That's why we didn't like it. We didn't feel like it was proper. We didn't want to do that. The requirements of the bill were what sent, were sent down by the bill, but this was in no means from the assessors wanting to say, hey, you can only, the law does says you can only have one, but it also says you have to live in that house or somebody has to have it as their primary residence. So if someone is living there, if it's your son, that qualifies it. You can have ten houses as long as it's somebody's primary house. The problem with the bill again was it wasn't for real property. It was for them to find out income tax purposes. That's why it passed so quickly. Again, am I going to say I like the bill? Absolutely not. We hated it. This is what come out. That is why it happened is because part of the bill says if the SITUS address and the mailing address do not match, we have to send out those letters.
Did they identify that you sent through to the?
They did.
To the mailing address?
Yes.
Uh, to me, that seems to be where the problem was, is none ever went to the property address.
It doesn't say the property address. We have to send it to the mailing.
To mailing address. It just seems like, or it would have been nice if one had been registered because either of those would have stopped. So I don't know the purpose of the bill, and I tried reading through it, and it was very confusing.
Yeah.
I just thought every person has a right to own at least one home, whether they live in that or whether they have their kids living in it or, I mean, because.
And, and you've been upfront, like, you admitted that, yeah, you should have changed the address, and it didn't, and it didn't happen. And that's why, you know, we're kind of sitting here between a rock and a hard place, and I'm saying, hey, I'm willing to try and work something out in between in this case, so. Do you have anything, Stan?
I just, like I said, I, I think it was a horrible bill, and I remember going up and trying to help Rod, you know, kill the bill, but this is like an unintended consequence. And honestly, if this is the only one we've got out of this, we're probably pretty lucky. But I would feel a lot better if we would just waive that this time and make sure they get everything done properly so it doesn't happen again. So that would be my input that it was, and then we can use this example again and maybe get the bill amended this go around, this next go around.
One thing to that, this will not be the only one.
I can't hear where you're standing, Rod.
He, he said this won't be the only one.
Well, it has been so far, so.
But, um, and, and to that, that's why I say I, I would like to try and meet somewhere, somewhere in the middle because, you know, we said this before, sound like a broken record, but it does set a precedent if we waive this completely, and then somebody else is in the same situation and comes in and we could, we could be repeating this over and over again. And really, it needs to be fixed on a state level. That's something we're, you know, we'll try and do. Where, in, in light of the, the address not being changed or updated, that's why I say, I think there's some, some cause on both sides where, you know, we ought to be able to work something out.
So what would you feel good about had Phil?
Hold on, hold on, one second. Go ahead, Rod.
The only thing that is good about this bill is it was a one-time for owners that have the homes. We still have to do it for any transaction that happens, so if it changes hands. But the good part about the bill is this was a one-time thing, and then now we just have to do it through ownership changes, so.
Okay. Um, I, I would, I'd be amenable to, to doing something like half or maybe doing a, a sixty, forty split where we take care of sixty, they, they pay forty percent of that difference so that obviously we'd be refunding some of that to them. But I just think that there probably ought to be some sort of compromise. Like you said, if, if that would help you so that you're not footing the whole thing, then that helps you, but it also, it, it does meet, you know, as far as help us try and follow the, the laws.
It's, it's too bad when the government from the county to the USPS, Utah, you know, the United States Postal Service, so what they're saying somewhere didn't happen or the whole thing wouldn't have happened. Does that make sense? If, if, if what, so I'm not saying the process from the county was definitely wrong. I don't have any proof that any of those three letters came, nor do I have any proof that the postal service sent any of those three letters back, nor that they threw them away. You know, there's no way to process it because nothing was ever registered. There's no real paper trail from either place. But somewhere, the process could have been corrected, and it wasn't, on somewhere in the government. And that's, I think, what's a little frustrating to the people that you guys deal with because we're, I, I'm not saying I think I should pay less than what my share is. And I've always been a champion of the school, and I'm hoping that's where our property taxes go. So it doesn't have anything to do with that. It just seems like the process was a little flawed to start with where the property address, which was assumed as my personal owned-only ownership, was correct. My address of the property is correct and had just one notice been sent there. So maybe it came, the process of what they came up with, and apparently it came from the state. It seems like if you had had two residences in Utah, that would have been easy to have just done on a database. I hope that we're, I mean, if Cache County said she's paying, they've got a, they've got a primary home here in Box Elder County, it seems like that should have flagged that there's two primary residents, whereas just a mailing address, most people just aren't using mailing addresses. And I wonder why when letters aren't sent back by the post office, mailing address is becoming a joke. So, but whatever, Jeff, you know, we were wrong. We didn't update our address, and, and whatever you feel is appropriate, you know, a couple hundred, three hundred, I, you know.
I.
It's better than nine hundred.
Yeah. And, and like I say, and I don't, I don't want to burden you guys with it, but it sounds like it's, it's been a, a processing issue. So do you have anything you want to say, Mr. Scott?
No, I mean, I, I understand both sides of it. I really do. And, and Rod, I mean, bless his heart and his apartment.
Well, he, he did his, he did the process. I think the process was a little flawed under the circumstance because the post office apparently didn't do what they should have done, or it would have also been corrected.
And they, they have, they have to do what they have to do. They have to follow the statute, or they're in violation, you know, they can, they can be in a lot of trouble for that. We're given a little bit of latitude on this, and that's the reason, you know, we have this appeal process. And I would echo what Commissioner Hadfield says. It's not something we take lightly, and we want to do the right thing by the residents, by the law, and not set precedent as well. I admire you for being out there and providing service.
Thank you.
And that's, you know, something that ought to be taken into, to account on these types of things because there is one for military. But I could see the potential for abuse of other people. And so it's, it's kind of a fine line that everybody has to walk, but, you know, I agree with Commissioner Hadfield. I, I would like to, to see us be able to do something.
I mean, I'd be amenable to even just, like, if we had them pay the three hundred and we covered the rest of the, that nine hundred and something so that just, because you're, you're right. I mean, it's, it's, there's an issue on both sides that, and so at least, you know, everybody says, yeah, there's, there's an issue here, you know.
And I will say, the auditor's office were, were very kind, and he helped me get that settled very quickly.
They're very thorough, and they follow the law.
Absolutely. And so I have no problem with that. It is just a little frustrating when it seems to be that the process just, I don't have even a problem with that people should pay. If they're rich enough to have two properties, two homes, you know, then they should pay more on one. If we're getting a discount for a primary residence, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. It just seemed to be that we didn't have an updated address, and that was my bad. And if it cost me three hundred, then that's probably pretty cheap, I guess, better than nine hundred.
Yeah, and, and.
Jeff and Jeff?
Yes, Stan.
Hey, this is Stan again. Sorry to butt in. But I also know that if she would have came in or been known about this stuff, she would have qualified for circuit breakers because of their income also. So, you know, in lieu of that, and looking at the things that have happened in that direction, you know, like I said, I, I think it's a crappy bill. We take the cases one by one while they come. You know, if we find somebody that served a mission for six years and, and all this kind of stuff, I guess, you know, then we take them one by one. I don't, I don't think it's a slippery slope when we, when we have a genuine problem that we can see that's happened. So, you know, I'd be amenable to do whatever we can up to the entire amount, but because of the plain fact that if she'd have known that she could come in, she could have got the circuit breaker on everything too because of other income, so.
The problem, Stan. Stan, the problem with the circuit breaker is you have to live in that house a hundred and eighty-three days. I read it.
Yeah.
And so we wouldn't qualify.
Well, but you sold the house too, so, I was saying, all this stuff, if it all would have come together.
Well, that was in Cache Valley.
No, he's talking, she's talking about the primary residence.
The primary residence. We, we would not qualify for this. I believe one of the requirements on your website is that you have to live there physically, be there a hundred and eighty-three days.
Yeah, because you weren't, yeah, because you run a mission.
I guess, I guess the point I'm making in saying is, you know, compromise, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but is the fact that, I mean, they're admitting, yeah, they, if, this would have been avoided if they'd have changed the address and, and, you know, they got the notices and, and if they'd have been able to get some of the things, you know, notices sent to the property, there's, there's things on both sides here, and that's why, you know, if you guys are okay with that, saying, you know, three hundred and we, we take care of the rest, then I'm, I'm good with that, but it's up to you guys.
Any other thoughts, Commissioner Summers?
No, I'm good. If you want to put that into a motion.
Yeah, I would, I would make that a formal motion that the, that the county, that the, the Smiths take care of three hundred, and the county would forego the, the remainder between the primary residence and secondary.
I think she's paid, I think she's paid everything, so we just have to cut her a check if I'm not.
We're funding it, so.
So I'd second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Kay. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like we're to Marsha Menla. Come on up. Did I pronounce that right?
Yeah, it's Marie with a sh, Marisha.
Marisha, okay, sorry.
No, I'm Marsha, Marisha.
And I'm the one who chose the name.
Okay. If you guys will state your name for the record and tell us why you're here.
Yes, I'm Marisha Menla.
And I am Kelly Harris.
And we purchased the Bear River Valley Care Center formerly owned by Mission Health in June of two thousand twenty, and we never received a tax assessment, so that's why we're here. Before we purchased the property, and in fact, I have this outline for you guys, maybe you can follow along with the chronology of events.
I didn't make the phone, I didn't ask, but.
Good job.
Basically, when we, when we were under contract on the property, we tried to figure out what the.
Can you speak close to the mic? Commissioner Summers says he can't hear very good. That's great, yeah.
Sorry, Commissioner Summers.
No, you're fine.
Okay, so when we purchased, prior to purchasing the property in May of two thousand twenty, we were doing all the, the research and trying to figure out what the tax liability would be when we were figuring out financially if we could make the, the business deal work. And so I first contacted the county on May third of two thousand twenty, and I questioned about the tax liability. Currently, the building had been assessed at two million dollars on the website. However, we were under contract for a much lower price at that point in time. On the, the next day, May fourth, Diana responded to my email. Originally, I'd emailed Box Elder County Assessor at Box Elder County, that's like the EAssessor at Box Elder County, and the responder was Diana. And she responded and asked for a parcel number. She couldn't find Bear River Nursing Home as the prior owner of the property. So I responded back later that week with the parcel number, and Diana got right back to me. She responded to me that the property was tax exempt, so she didn't have an answer for me. She didn't know how it would be valued once it went from exempt to exempt. for me. She didn't know how it would be valued once it went from exempt to taxable. So she did give me a formula, like, if you purchase the property, you can take this formula and kind of figure out, but it would determine, we were going to go from it being a nursing home to turning it into low-income housing, so it'd be residential now. So she said, it's too hairy of a process. I can't tell you what your liability is going to be. So, moving forward, we decide we're going to go, based on that percentage, we can do the math, okay, we have a rough estimate of what our property tax liability will be. So, go forward, we go to close on the property on June 2, and there's no tax collected in the closing statement. And so I asked, okay, what's the tax liability? And the title company told us that it was tax exempt. So the previous owner didn't have a tax liability. They're like, okay, well, do you know what it's going to be? And they said, no. So, you know, a couple weeks later, now we're into June, we've closed on the property. I called Diana in response to her email earlier in the month. And I said, okay, this is what we closed on the property. This is the price that we paid. It's significantly less than the $2 million that it was assessed at. Can you do anything about it now, or tell me what it's going to be? And she said, unfortunately, it's still June. You'll get an assessment from us later on in the summer. We, I can't do anything about it now. So I said, okay. Well, June goes by, July, August, September. I haven't heard anything from the county. And so I called her the end of August, and she wasn't available. And so they just said, you know, call her back, she's on vacation. September, I called again, asked for Diana, and they said, oh, sorry, she's not available right now. Call her back, she'll be back in the office next week. I call October 5. Again, she's on vacation, and they said, send her an email. And so I sent her an email on October 5. I let her know that we closed on the property, that I hadn't received a tax assessment on the property. I'm trying to budget for what my tax bill is going to be in November, because we're in the middle of remodeling it and reconfiguring it, so it can be apartments. So budgeting's a big deal, because it's all, you know, we don't have any income right now. But I didn't hear back. And so, mid-October, I called again. And again, she wasn't available to talk to. However, somebody else was, I said, well, I've tried and tried to get ahold of Diana. I, I sent her an email, I haven't heard back. This is my situation. And they, they said, oh, you need to talk to the treasurer. So they sent me to the treasurer's office. And so I talked to the treasurer, and I said, I don't know what my tax bill's going to be. And they say, oh, it's going to be $2 million. They looked it up. And I said, well, that's what it's been, but I closed on this property back in May, or back in June. I've been in contact with the assessor's office. I was supposed to be notified with a notification. And they said, oh, yeah, that's past, you've passed that point. And I said, I, I don't have anything. Is it because we were no, new owners? Did it go to the old owner? And the address that they gave me it was sent to was 460 West 600 North. And that was Mission Health's address. They had offices there as a care center, right? I don't have an office. It's a construction site. We don't get mail there now. So I said, well, actually, this is the address, our business address is where we can receive tax valuations or tax information. So can, in the future, can you please send tax bills there? And they said, yes. So they changed it in the system. So the treasurer said, well, you'd need to talk to Mr. Bennett or somebody else in the assessor's office. We're the treasurer, so we just send it out. But we don't have anything to do with making the decision of how it's assessed. I said, okay. So, week later, I call back, ask to talk to Diana. She wasn't available, but somebody else was. I told them I talked to the treasurer. They suggested I talk to Rodney Bennett instead of Diana. And what happened at that point is they told me the title company had probably made a mistake, because the property actually wasn't tax exempt. So I had a title company issue. So I called the title company and get them involved at this point. The girl's name is Tiffany. And so Tiffany and I go back and forth pretty much the whole month of November, and I'm starting to sweat bullets, because now I, I know that my tax bill's going to be $24,000, and I was planning on about seven. And Tiffany's telling me, oh, the county made a mistake, because half of this bill should have been tax exempt. But you're responsible for the whole thing, so Box Elder County will make this adjustment, but I just need to talk to them. Well, Tiffany keeps trying to call the county, and she's not able to reach anybody that can help her either. And so I have this email chain with Tiffany going back and forth. Finally, when she's not getting anywhere, taxes are due on November 30, so November 23, I call. And I ask to speak to either Rodney or to Diana, and nobody's available. They're on vacation. It's the week before Thanksgiving. But taxes are due the following Monday. Whoever I spoke to was super helpful. I mean, as much as he could be, but said, I'm sorry, I don't have any authority to tell you anything except for send Rodney an email. I know that they've pushed back prop, the property due date because of COVID, luckily. So he said, you have some time that you don't have to stress the week of Thanksgiving about this. He said, don't pay it yet until, till you've talked to somebody. And so that's what I did. I said, I sent the email, and Monday morning, Rodney called me, and I missed his call. He'd left a voicemail, and I didn't get it till about four o'clock in the afternoon. So I missed him on Monday, but I called him Tuesday morning, and he answered, and he was super helpful. I explained the situation. We had a great conversation. But he's the enforcer. Not that he likes the law or likes that all these things are put in place, but he said, this is the way it is, because I have to treat everybody the same way. I realize that you didn't get the mail, but that's not on me. It's similar to Mrs. Smith. That we just, I was search, I was seeking to get that assessment. I've been, before we even bought the property, I was asking for it and wanted to give you anything that you needed to make a fair valuation, so we can make our business work. But I feel like we've kind of been on a wild goose chase. So Rodney suggested, he said, well, there's nothing I can do. I can help you next year, and I will help you next year. So I really appreciated that. But he said, if you want something done this year, you're going to have to go before the commissioners. So I, that's why we're here.
Can I interject one thing, too?
Sure.
During the month of September, our family had COVID, so, and Marisha was on lockdown and was dead, really quite sick and so forth. So that, that, that was an influential part of this situation as well.
And I, I know the same thing with our treasurer's office and our assessor's office, when some of this time, timeline here, they were, you know, closed up and, and working remotely, and it was a, it was a difficult time for those departments, so...
Yeah, no, it's, it's hard for everybody, for sure. So, not pointing blame, but just...
I, I guess, when, when did the title company, I guess, really get involved in and start delving into it?
November, end of October and November.
But prior to that, they just said, oh, it's tax exempt, and they just kind of washed their hands of it.
Uh-huh. And they still believe it's tax exempt. That's their, but it's not, because Rodney said, I, when, during the course of our conversation, apparently to be tax exempt, you have to apply. And Mission Health did not apply for tax exempt status last year. And in the past, they've been notorious for not always reapplying for tax exempt status. But we as buyers are only as good as the information we're being given. So when the county tells us it's tax exempt, when the title company tells us it's tax exempt, I didn't rely. Now, I've been educated, I know what advice to give somebody else. But at the time, I did not, I did not know that, until November, until December 1, when I learned that from Rodney, so...
Okay. Do you guys have anything? Stan or Jeff?
Uh, no, I, I spoke at length with, with Marisha and, and Kelly. And from what I understand, they have been tax exempt in the past, but they did not apply, and so they weren't currently in a tax exempt status for 2020, Mission Health. If that were the case, then it would be pro rata. So if they were tax exempt for maybe nine months out of the year, then the remaining three months would be the responsibility of the buyer at the current assessed level. And if they wanted to appeal that assessment, they would certainly have the ability to do that. Is that the way that that would work if they are tax exempt?
That would be correct.
Okay. All right.
But they did have the opportunity to appeal. That's where, is it okay if I...
Sure, please, one up.
Another great mess. This is one that I, that's taken aback, that Tiffany's called us, because I don't believe it. I'm there every day. I have never heard from a Tiffany from a title company. I don't know what she's saying.
What title company is it?
In West.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, I, I'm just saying, that's the problems. I can tell you that we're, we've been available. I don't know how, how these missed. We were closed for COVID on, right at Veterans Day. The problem really stems initially, well, first of all, Diana said everything correct. Until we have the finalized numbers, we don't tell what taxes are going to be. So all we can go by is last year's values. And I've talked to Marisha, Marisha, about that, I'm sorry. Been very nice to talk to, and I, and I appreciate that. Again, we're kind of tied. I, one of the first things I did do is I went to the recording document, the transfer. We were sending the mail to the location that was on the transfer document. So we sent the mail to where it was asked to do on the recording document.
Let me interject there. Not that this is, we typically use Jenny Goring and Shuri Lawton, and in this situation, we were pushed to use this other title company. So Jenny always lined that up.
Would take care of those.
Right? And so, another lesson there. They didn't get the LLC address right on the booking.
And so then what that did is put it behind for the appeals. Then when she comes, we're past date of doing anything. So, again, one of those that, there should be no exemption for this year, because it was not applied for Mission, is that Mission Services would not have got it either if they didn't apply. The assumption was made, and in the email that I did read that come from her, she says it was exempt last year. That is correct, so...
And when did they apply for the exemption? Is it, was it after our closing date? Is that why they didn't apply?
No.
Or should they have applied January 1st?
It's, it's in the March timeframe. What's the last date to do it? The May 1st?
March 1st.
I think they haven't gotten it by March 1st. They should have had it done.
They should have had it done. Okay.
But again, and I think I explained this to you, they have been a little notorious of not getting it in when they need to, so...
Okay. All right, thanks, Rod. Mr. Summers, any thoughts?
Yeah, I, like I said, we spoke with Marissa and Kelly at night. I honestly think that there's another huge problem with, with this one too. So if we could go back and actually assess them for what it was, kind of like what Commissioner Scott was talking about, in that aspect, I'd feel a lot better with them moving forward in that aspect, because they know they need to pay something, but they had no idea what they were going to pay. And then going off of what the, what they actually did say, I think is just way too much. So I think if we could assess them for what basically it was bought for, and I think Marissa said, you closed in June, you know, so that would be a six-month, or whatever, if there was a back tax or whatever that was. But I just have a hard time with everything that was going on with COVID, not only with Kelly and their family, but everything that was going on with us. I just think it was another thing that slipped through the cracks. So, once again, you're the, Hadfield, you're the master of being able to put two things together. So let's see what we can do about making everybody feel good about.
The deadline to appeal?
September 15. There cannot be a value change done at this time. You've got to do a tax forgiveness.
Right. Right.
Can I, can I ask a question now? When, when we had called them...
You're going to pull the mic over, so, yeah, so that she can get you recorded?
When we had called and told them the new evaluation and given them the amount, doesn't that set any kind of a precedent? Couldn't that have been noted in the file? Couldn't that have been something that, I mean, why does it have to go then to the appeals process? Because that's how the evaluation should have been determined, I believe. And we're, we're not, we're not trying to get out of paying our fair share of the taxes. We just want them to be assessed at the real market value that the property was, was purchased for. Especially at this time, where we're trying to completely remodel it and restructure it. So it's, it's very expensive.
Yeah, and I'm by no means an assessor. That's definitely Rod's department. And it, from what I understand, market conditions are obviously one of the things that is taken into account, but not the only thing. And so even if somebody does buy a property well under the current assessed value, that doesn't necessarily change the assessed value. And so if, if, for example, you know, something is currently assessed at $2 million, and somebody has the ability to buy it for even 1.8, that doesn't mean that it's automatically, the assessed value drops to 1.8. Is that correct, Rod?
That'd be correct.
So, and, you know, the other thing is, they have to, they have to be within, is it 5% Rod, of the approximate current market value? Otherwise, the state has the ability to come in and assess it at the state level instead of at the county level?
Actually, yes. And that's as a whole, not on an individual basis, but we're required to be within 10% on commercial properties, 5% on residential properties. So we do a bunch of sales ratios to make sure our numbers are coming in. Again, we can't make, we can't make an assumption, because somebody tells us that they might buy a property, that this is going to be the sales price. We can't do that. That's why we say, well, let's see what the values are, and at that point, make an appeal on it. It could, it may or may not have changed. That's something that we would have to look into deeper than just that conversation. So that's where we can't say, no. We would never say that, just because you told me you bought it for this price, that's what we're going to change it to. I would never say that, because we would get into all kinds of troubles if we did that. So, yes, it may change the value if we would have looked at it. It may not have. I can't say without the data, going through the data to do that, so...
Okay. So...
And I would assume that the, the value on it, when you purchased it, you know, obviously will be substantially different than next year, because it will be, you know, a different facility, different use, and, and everything, so...
So what would the, I guess we'd have to calculate it out, but I'm just, I'm thinking out loud here, if it was valued at $2 million, and we went ahead and just assessed the tax from June, from the time that they took it on the $2 million and had them pay the taxes for that half a year?
That would take it down to, I mean, if it was, if it were based on the assessed value and what it was at, I think that would take it down to like 13.5. Would be my guess. I mean, if it was just for the, the six months.
Because, you know...
Maybe a little bit more than that, because it was, it was June 2, was the closing date, and so that would be a little more than half the year, but...
Obviously, you know, it sounds like the, the title company, there, there were some, some mistakes or, or things done there that probably didn't help. So, I don't know. What are you guys' thoughts on that?
Well, I know that they were, I know that they have to pay taxes, just like, you know, Kelly had said, so...
But I think we keep the value where, where it's been assessed at, because that's where, what it's at. You can't change that.
I just wish they would have known that when they were going to go in and buy it, because I think they might have, I don't think they would have second guessed it, that maybe the loan would have been a different thing. But anyway.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
I've got a lot of thoughts. Yeah, I guess, one of the biggest frustrations that I would have is, and this is me, this is the reason we purchased title insurance. And so I think that there's, you know, a, some culpability here by the, the title company. When they're, when they're doing this research and they're preparing the, the title report, it's their obligation to do all the due diligence and, and make sure that you're buying a piece of property that's unencumbered. And technically, it wasn't, because they hadn't applied for the tax exempt status. And so there would be a tax, not a tax lien, but taxes owed against that property. And so that should have been prepared and should have been part of the, the closing statement. And so that's a frustration that I have.
Yeah, Rodney, well, I sent him the closing deck, you know, we've been really open and communicating with him, and he found, we had actually signed with, in line... We've been really open and communicating with him and he found, we had actually signed with, in line title that they had done research on 2019's taxes instead of 2020. And so they weren't responsible for tax evaluation mess ups is basically what we, we signed our rights away.
That was a, thank you. Uh, that was a document that they actually had these guys sign. Cause I called her back after and I says, "I'm sorry, I've already given you bad news. I got more bad news." But they had her sign a document that says, "We are not responsible for miscalculation of taxes," basically is what it said.
Wow.
Man.
So we can't, we can go back on this, and they'll probably tell us to pound sand.
I, yeah, I mean, I would assume if you've closed and, uh, they've got their money and you've got the building, I can't imagine that they're going to be too anxious to, to do anything, cause buyer beware.
Our realtor's working with Canyon Title and the seller discussing the situation too. But I don't foresee, they've all been paid, so take the money and run.
No, I'm certainly sympathetic. I mean, I, I look at the, uh, the amount of detail that you have and the records and, uh, and what you've tried to do and, and everything. And, uh, you know, in my opinion, you were just given some, some faulty information from some people that, uh, should have been.
Looking out for you.
Yeah, they should have been your advisors and I don't think that they gave you the best advice by any stretch of the imagination. So I mean, I guess our options are to, to leave it as is or we in essence have to forgive it because that's the only thing that we can do. Cause they're past the appeal, they're past the deadline, and it won't get assessed again until next year.
Can we, can we do the, the six months paying from the time they take over ownership?
We can do the six month.
On the, on the valuation of the 2 million?
We could, but, uh, that will still be a, it's a tax forgiveness is what it amounts to.
Yeah. But that's something, I don't know if that's something that's, that's workable. It's not the 7,000 that you were budgeting for, but where it's valued at 2 million. Rodney?
Um, did you guys pay this or have you been still holding off?
Yes, still holding off.
One other thing that needs to probably, and this is not my department, but one other thing that needs to be probably brought up in whatever you're deciding is penalties and interest would have been applied after Monday.
That's right.
So, um, I like to say that's Treasury's office, but just be aware of that in whatever you're deciding.
Okay.
This is coming Monday?
No.
This last Monday?
Two days ago.
But in our conversations, we were told that.
That it had been extended.
It was two weeks in statute.
This commission meeting to where, you know, we could have discussed the issue.
No, I'm certainly sympathetic, but you know, again, like we mentioned, it would be, it would be in essence a tax forgiveness, cause that's the only thing that we can do at this point, so.
But, yeah, I don't, I don't know that we're gonna get any, anything righted from the title company.
No, cause they've, they've signed that, uh, they've signed that away, so.
What, what would you be comfortable with?
Going after the title company. But you know, again, they, they've got the documents on their side that just basically says, you know, we wash our hands, it's.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry, I just got bumped again.
You still there?
Was that, was that a motion for the six month deal?
No, I was just a suggestion.
I guess my motion would be that, uh, that we, we do help them out with the other six months where they were going on good faith. I feel bad that they, they kinda gotten taken advantage of by the, uh, the title company. And you know, obviously COVID was an issue for them. It was in, you know, our department as well, but I don't know that that had any impact on it, quite frankly, from our department. Because the information that, uh, it sounds like that, that, you know, Rod and Diana passed on was completely accurate. But, um, I, I feel bad that you expected to pay a pro rata share and find out that it wasn't tax exempt.
Yeah.
So I guess that would be, that would be my motion. Yeah, that would be my motion is that we take it from, and we'd have to get in a panel, but from, from the time that, uh, that they closed. And so in essence, they would pay, uh, seven months as if it had not been tax exempt. And that we forego the interest and penalties where it was, you know, just two days ago before this meeting.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks Kelly, thanks Marissa.
Thank you.
Thanks you guys.
Um, as far as paying it and having those these ways, do you make the, will the assessor make the adjustment?
Uh, it'd be the treasurer. We'll work, work with Sean Thornley, the treasurer there and get that taken care of.
Okay, so if he makes the adjustment today, I can pay it tomorrow, should I try to?
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to. It might not be a bad idea to check with the office, but we'll have to get that exact amount.
Yeah.
So.
I will walk with them over to Sean's office to see if he's there.
Oh, thanks Rod.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your input. Um, we're glad that everybody is happier and healthier, or at least healthier. Thanks you guys.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Looks like we're to our Bureau of Health Department 2020 report.
That one has been pushed to our second meeting in January.
Okay.
So we'll, uh, go ahead and skip that over. Yep.
Okay, Marla, you're up.
All right, we have four biz beer licenses to renew. They are, uh, Grouse Creek Marketing LLC, that's used to be the Gone Country one. Riverside Corner. Trigon LLC, that one's out in South Willard. Fast Stop In, hold it. And Kevin has already approved those, so.
Everything's been good and inspected, okay. Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve the, uh, the beer licenses for these four locations as outlined.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Looks like, uh, Jenica, you're up with the uniform allowance?
Okay, so as you know, in budget hearings, um, we discussed a proposal from the sheriff regarding his employees, the sworn officers and their uniform allowance. What was requested was for these new officers coming in who are straight out of the academy, uh, uniforms are quite expensive. They have to buy a lot of different items and we regulate what they can and can't have, um, what they have to have. And so the proposal was to take the first 26 pay periods that they normally get paid the uniform allowance and advance that into a one-time payment on their first paycheck. So I've written a policy, um, to help my office and payroll know how that's supposed to work. Basically what'll happen is the employee fills out a form their first week of employment on their first paycheck. They then choose to either have the lump sum or the 26 payments for the year. And then if they choose the lump sum, 26 payrolls later, they will go back to the bi-weekly amount.
I know that we have like the, uh, the education. So if somebody's getting education and it's, uh, towards their position, you know, we assist with that. There's not necessarily a clawback on that. Would this be similar? I mean, that's the only concern that I have is I'm, I'm hoping that these guys are dedicated and that they wanna be here and that they'll be here for 26, you know, weeks. That is six months, but that would be the only potential concern.
Well, so this is actually for 26 pay periods, so it's a full 52 weeks.
Oh, 26 pay periods, so it's a full year.
Right now, there is no clause that says if you leave, you pay it back or any of that. We did away with that with the Sheriff's Office education policy.
Right.
Everywhere else in the county, it still is existing, but with the recruiting problems that we're having.
That would be, that would be my only hesitation. Um, at the same time, I almost hesitate to have it in there because it's, it's tough to hire folks right now. And it seems like, uh, you know, anything that, so.
It is something that we could bring back in a year and review how it has gone. And if it seems that they're taking it and leaving, then we could maybe address it then.
Well, I mean, a lot of the, I mean, some of the things that, uh, that you would use at, at any agency, they'd be able to, to carry. But you know, obviously, uh, maybe shirts, pants, you know, things of that nature. It's, it's kinda unique to, to Buckstler County and the uniform code, so. I like the idea, um, cause I mean, it, that's a lot of money to put out for all that equipment one time just out of, out of the academy, so. Okay, it's a good idea.
All right, do we need to have that motion or do we need to do anything with it?
It's helpful for me for the payroll department if you can make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I'd make a motion that we approve the, um, Buckstler Sheriff's Office Uniform Allowance Policy, giving the new hire option to, uh, receive the uniform allowance upfront rather than over the 26 pay periods.
I'll second that motion. And I keep getting bumped, sorry guys.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's okay Stan, if you get bumped, I'll, I'll fill in for you.
Jeff and Scott was doing exactly what I was talking about too, so I didn't need to interject anymore.
Okay, thanks Jenica. All right, um, looks like Scott Lyons.
Oh, we got Steve, that grandma.
Oh, Steve, sorry, sorry Scott. Yeah, Steve, you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. It looks like we have the grandma, grandma appeal?
Yes, and, uh, basically what this is, it's an appeal that goes, so our office made the determination, sent out a response. They didn't like our response, and so now you guys have to determine whether our response was appropriate. You should have all seen copies of the original request, our response, and then the appeal. Did you all get copies of those?
Yeah, it looked like, uh, his response was that he wanted all of this information, but as you searched for it, all the information that he's asking about simply doesn't exist. And so that was what you responded to and he didn't like that answer.
Yeah, pretty much. He is a, he's currently an inmate down at the state prison.
Gunnison.
He's constantly corresponding with us. He's had prior grandma requests, which we've answered. One of the things in this case was, um, he, we sent him stuff a year ago and I wasn't gonna send it to him again. So basically he had three requests and we gave him stuff so we could find out one. The second one, uh, was about a confidential informant. We have no information on that one. And third one, we'd already given it to him, so.
Okay.
What we need, what a commissioner's role is, is to determine whether that's an appropriate response or not and then just issue a letter saying this is, this is what our decision is.
Okay. No, I mean, given the information, I mean, and looking over his request and that, uh, that your office has, has looked for it and, uh, the information simply doesn't exist. I don't know how that we can provide, you know, this individual with information that doesn't exist, so. I would make the emotion that, uh, we deny the grandma appeal based on the fact that the records being requested just simply don't exist.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So do we have Chrissy basically follow up with that and sending out a letter saying that this is our?
Does it come from there?
What I can do is, I, I can let it together, uh, for your signature, get it over to you, and then you can pin that out.
Okay, great, thanks. Anything else Steve?
Nope, that's it on it, thank you.
Okay, take care of that knee.
He sent another letter today, by the way.
What letter today?
Yeah, he sent another letter just saying we haven't responded to his appeal.
Oh, okay.
He'll get one saying we did, so. All right. Scott Lyons.
All right. So we just have one item today. It's the Freeman Farms subdivision. Just disappeared on me. So this is a 20 lot subdivision and it's located at, uh, 10 125 North, 6800 West. Uh, so it's on Iowa String Road just south of, um, Tremonton City. So it has been, um, reviewed. It's been through the preliminary plat process and now this is the final plat process. It's been through the final plat process, um, and comes with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. Also comes with a recommendation of approval from all other, um, applicable departments. Uh, and there is also a subdivision improvement agreement, uh, that would be approved along with this final plat. I don't have the plat here with me currently. The applicant came with it earlier, but he, uh, had not signed it with a notary. So I asked him to go have that taken care of and bring it back and we would get our signatures on it once, once his was on it, so.
Narrow lots to meet the setback?
Uh, it's just meet the frontage requirements.
Frontage requirements, yeah. What size are these lots?
Um, they're all like between one and a half and two acres.
Okay, yeah. Cool. All right, um, so it's been reviewed by applicable departments and everything's good. We just don't have the plat?
Yep, everyone's, everyone's seen it and everyone's, everyone has, um, approved it or recommended that it be approved.
All right. I'd make a motion that we approve the Freeman Farms subdivision.
Second.
Can you include the subdivision improvement agreement in that?
Oh, including the subdivision improvement agreement, thank you.
Okay.
Still second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks Scott. Okay, Joan. How are you?
Swell, how about you?
Good.
Good. So for over 20 years, um, every December, per our, uh, our bylaws, the Buckstler County Tourism Office has come to the commission just to kinda give a yearly report. And, um, usually I love coming here because it's all great news. This year has been a strange year, so, um, I, I wanna take just a second and I've got, I've got, uh, Mary Ann Urban here from our, uh, our Brigham City, um, museum. And I've got, and we've got Commissioner Summers, our two members of our tourism council. And I just wanted to recognize them for being here with us. So tourism benefits Buckstler County, it, we say that it's, it's clean revenue. You know, folks come in, they spend their money and, and they head home and we don't have to, we don't have to, uh, educate their kids and, and we don't have to. Hopefully we don't, you know, we, they don't, they're not in our jails or ruining our infrastructure. So, so we like tourists that come in. Just a couple of, uh, really fun numbers to, um, to, to bring to you. In 2018, we have, obviously we don't have 20 numbers yet. So this is good news. In 2019, Utah visitors spent $10.6 billion, um, while they were in the state of Utah, which supported 1,004, 1,401, 104, 140,000 jobs, resulting in $1.34 billion in state and local tax revenue. And that relieves each Utah household of $1,310 in taxes that otherwise would have to pay. So tourism has a real, um, has a real positive benefit for our citizens. And so we, we feel like it's a, it's a, it's a great, it's a great benefit to, to our state. So 2020's been full of, of a few struggles. Usually when I come here, I, I might mention something is significant, but obviously we've had a pandemic. And I don't think there's been a, an industry hit any harder than tourism. In our, in our county, tourism has been hit particularly difficult, particularly hard because of, of the struggles that we've had, because of the shutdowns, because of, um, because of the illness that has been here. You know, we were, we were very excited. The first quarter of 2020, um, we were doing very, very well and we're starting to see some momentum because of our, our big celebration in 2019 with the Golden Spike National Historical Park. And so we were really counting on that and really excited to see folks coming from all over because they, they wanted to visit that site. And so obviously all of that, all of that went away, which kind of affected everything else. And because of all this, we really haven't been in a position to support our partners the way that we usually do, including our, including our grants and, and some of the other ways that we're able to help them. There have been some highlights in 2020. The state of Utah, the Utah Tourism Industry Association has partnered with the, uh, with the. With the. With the Utah Utah education folks and instituted a Utah High School Hospitality Program. We've been able to be really instrumental in that. We've we've helped them with curriculum and things like that, and more importantly, we've been able to take some of our partners, including our. Our hoteliers and people like that, and they've been able to get into the schools and and teach. I've been able to go in and teach a few things, and so that's been kind of a fun highlight, and that's something that. That we've been able to see throughout the state, and and Bucks Elder County has been particularly involved in that, so that's been a really great thing this year. We held the fair, you know, it didn't look like our normal fair, and there were there were. Things that, you know, we wish we could have done and and couldn't do, and there were things that we did do, and so. At the end of the day, we were able to help a lot of kids, and and we were able to help our community. So our partners had record setting visitations, so if you talk to Willard Bay State Park, or you talk to the Bird Refuge. You know, there are folks out there all the time. Golden Spike had had a really great year, mostly lots of folks going out to Spiral Jetty and. And 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 people just, people really recreated all over the county, and. And that was a real positive, and you know, the the con to that is that. They weren't necessarily coming into town and grabbing a bite to eat, or they weren't staying in our hotels or or things like that, so you know, there were. While we were happy to have so many folks here, it also taxed some of our resources, and so that's kind of a something that that we were very. We were very aware of, but you know, a pro to that also is. That, you know, hopefully, those people were really excited to come, and they'll come back, you know, and and that will help our it will. Hopefully, visitation will be really robust next year, and we'll be able to, we'll be we'll be able to get some of those folks in town. On a state level, we've got great partnerships with Utah Tourism, Utah Tourism Industry Association. I sit on that board. I sit on the board of the Governor's World Partnership Board. It's important that we have really strong. Partnerships and relationships with our state folks. It really helps us have a voice in shaping tourism policy. And it allows us to participate in various programs and things like that, and you know, I I represent my my counterparts in tourism. In all the rural areas around the state, and I take that really seriously, and I feel like that's a that's an important responsibility. Something interesting, the fourth quarter of this year, our requests for information have skyrocketed. And we've 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 been fairly flat on our requests for most of the most of the year. But through the fall and and up till now, we those those requests for information have really skyrocketed. So that kind of is something that we look forward to for 2021. We're starting to see people are anxious to travel again. We look forward to seeing our numbers recover and and that, you know, we'll come back strong. You know, a lot of this, if somebody told me that I would be sitting here in December, and we're still talking about the pandemic. A few months ago, I would have laughed. I didn't think that would happen, so you know, obviously, we're a little cautious with that, but I. I don't think I'm going to stay here next year and talk about the pandemic, other than aren't we glad it's in the rearview mirror and we're we're doing well, so. So I look forward to that. Right? I look forward to that in 2021. Our lodging partners, they're they're keen to. We 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 started a hospitality group with all of our lodging partners, and they were really wanting to work. Close together, and then pandemic hit, and they were just trying to hang on for dear life, so we're looking forward to doing that in. So not just with our lodging partners, but all of our hospitality partners, our our hoteliers, and all of our. All of our partners. We are, we will be marketing a lot to the Utah market this year. As people get more comfortable with traveling, we want to, we want to see people from all over the state come to Bucks Elder County, and. And of course, we'll still reach out to those outside of the state, but that will be a strong market for us in 2021. Want to get people excited to come, and we want to get them comfortable. I just want to just remind us, remind you and 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 just to. To let you know that, you know, our biggest, our biggest partners are those that we have here in the county, and that's what that's what our office does, is we are here to support those folks that. That work really, really hard to bring people into our into our county. We so we we support them. It's really what our mission is. Our Tourism Council is amazing, and. And they they work really, really hard in those in their respective worlds, and and so we're happy to be a part of that. So I just wanted to thank you for your leadership and support and and. Let you know that we're going to come in strong in 2021, and it'll be a good year.
Sounds good. A couple of bright spots, Willard Bay said one of the best years that they've ever had.
Yeah.
Coming back from Davis County the other night, the Reader Board over the freeway. Said, watch out for congestion on 750, and the traffic was backed up all the way down the off ramp.
Yeah, so.
Willard Bay, and Peach City's having the best year they've ever had.
Peach City's had a record breaking year. The other, that's what's been interesting with the with the restaurants is they're either.
Hit and miss.
Really, really great, or they're just hanging out by a thread, but yeah.
So.
So we're uh, we're we're thankful for those things, that we're thankful for those bright spots.
Yeah, well, thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom, looks like you're up.
Outstanding.
Well, it looks like we've got the resolution to adopt the 2021 budget.
Oh, okay.
All right, this is Resolution 20 dash 23. It's a resolution by the commissioners adopting the 2021 budget. There were some slight changes to the budget after being presented. One of them was we had to go back in and add some wages for a part time position at the attorney's office. That was approved, and then we also, I corrected the Bear River Mental Health number. We were off like 900 bucks, so.
Yeah, I knew it was really close from when Rob called, so.
So that was updated as well, so with that, we'll just turn it over to the commissioners for your adoption.
Okay. Do you have any comments about it, Stan?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay.
I appreciate your work on it. You guys do a lot of work putting this together and making sure that everything's in place and accurate, and. You know, again, like you mentioned, we're notoriously conservative, past and present as far as. Our revenue projections and and our expenses, and so that's that's good. We appreciate it, so. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Yeah, I would echo that. You you and your department do a great job, and make sure you tell them thanks.
Will do.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we adopt or approve Resolution 20 dash 23 to adopt the 2021 budget.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And Marla told me that I jumped the gun earlier after we had the public hearing.
Oh.
And after you talked about the other reasons for amending the other 2020 budget.
Yes.
I made a motion to approve the amended budget, so.
We can do it twice.
Yeah, I guess I guess we can just attach Resolution 20 dash 24 to that, and we're good. Okay. There you have it.
So we got that one out of the way.
You betcha.
Okay.
What's next?
Looks like Contract 2059, lease parcel.
Yeah, so this is for the parcel out by the landfill. We took it out to a request for bid. We had three bids come back. The high bid was by Chance Baxter. His bid was $4,600 per year. The rental would begin January 1 of 2021, and it would go for three years, taking him through December of 2023. So that was. That is that. So I just need approval from the commission to enter into that lease agreement with Mr. Baxter.
Okay, entertain a motion on it.
I'd make a motion that we approve Contract 20 dash 59, the ag lease for the parcel with Mr. Baxter.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, now we're to the fraud risk assessment, the one that everyone. Just was waiting for with bated breath.
Yes.
This is a new requirement from the state auditor's office that every year we have to do a fraud risk assessment and present it to the commission in a commission meeting. I sent it to you guys in an email. Basically, we go through, we answer certain questions. Personally, I don't necessarily agree with the scoring behavior on this. There's no scale. It's either all or nothing. And on the just, so like, one of the questions says, regardless of license or formal education, does at least one member of the management team receive at least 40 hours of formal training related to accounting, budgeting, or other financial areas? Probably, but. With UAC being down, I did not receive the 40 hours of formal training. I receive around 20 to 30. But there's 20 points available. We get zero because I didn't hit 40.
And the way that it's worded, it's it's talking one person. It's not saying, okay, throughout my staff.
Yeah, if we were to combine all the staff hours, that we would greatly exceed the 40 hours, so.
Right, okay.
But anyway, with that, so the score that we came up with was 315 points. Which puts us right at the high end of the moderate category. When in reality, I would say we're more in the very low to low category for a risk assessment, so.
Well, with all of the external audits that we've had and in visiting with them, and when they talk about the control processes that are in place. I I feel very comfortable. I I'm with you. We've went through these in a couple of other agencies I, you know, I'm a part of or boards. And a scale seems to make more sense. I mean, if if you're doing 99% of it right, you should get 99%. If there's a small issue, you can take care of it, but all or nothing doesn't make much sense, but it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, some of them, it's very, you know, clear that it's all or nothing, but on ones like that, it's. Anyway, whatever.
So if you missed a half hour of the 40 hours, because.
So if you had 39.25 hours, you would get zero points.
Okay.
And the person that had zero hours of training would also get zero points, so.
Do you need us to adopt this?
I think it's just information.
Tom?
I think it's just an information, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we are to the facility management policy. Any questions? We have been through this, I think, numerous times, renditions. It has been sent out to department heads, elected officials for their review and input back. There is a scheduled meeting. With Cody and the sheriff's office next week to address some of their concerns and issues going forward. But really, I I think this will be a good thing for the county. I think it's a good idea to have this all under one roof. No pun intended, but to have one central location, one central person responsible for these things. Let that Cody or whoever in the future becomes this position, Cody currently, but. That they are now responsible for this. They oversee budgets. They have the responsibility. There's one point to go to, much like IT and other departments.
And I'm sure there's going to be a few kinks that we're going to have to work out along the way.
100%, 100%.
Yeah, I think overall, it's a good good plan.
I think it'll be a good savings.
Yeah.
In the in the future and allow us to be a lot more efficient with everything going on, so I thought it was well written. As as I read through there, I thought it made a lot of sense, so. We don't have a number associated with that. Just prove it as policy.
Yeah, it's just a policy, so it's just a.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve our facilities management policy as outlined.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Fun part through all this, I've come to learn that trying to get a white van. Maintenance type van is nearly impossible. Currently, they're very, they're in more demand than about anything else out there. Oh, I can come back or whatever.
Okay. Well, yeah, let's do that now, because I'm going to have to be exiting here soon. So let's let's do that. Let's move into our RDA. Meeting. If we can change over to that. Marla, let's let us know when you're ready. Okay, it looks like we have some minutes to approve from December 2. I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve our minutes from our December 2 RDA meeting.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now it looks like we have the Resolution 20 dash 07 to adopt the 2021 budget for the RDA.
Yeah, so this is just, it's the exact same as was presented two weeks ago, no changes, so.
Okay. Great, I'd entertain a motion.
I was going to try to bring it up, but it wouldn't be done by the time I brought it up. I'll make a motion that we approve the 2021 RDA budget.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Commissioner Summers?
He said aye.
Oh, he did? Okay, I didn't.
I don't know.
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
I muted myself.
I'd entertain.
Make a motion that we close our RDA meeting.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers to close the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
So while I'm here, do you also want to go into your BOE? That was the other meeting posted, right?
Let's see.
We have that one posted? I don't have it on my board docs, but.
I don't send it to you. It's me, so Marla. But it is posted. It was in the paper and everything, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion that we close our commission meeting to to go into the Board of Equalization meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have motion by Mr. Scott, second by Mr. Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So the Board of Equalization, there are no previous minutes to approve. It is just approving the exemptions. Strangely enough, you've heard enough about those today for the year 2020. So we have the list in the system, and then also to approve those abatements that have been entered as well. And the different abatements include the county abatement, the circuit breaker, veterans, blind. More or less, it's just getting the BOE's approval of those. Parcels that we've reviewed have been approved, and it's just getting the BOE's final say on it.
All right. No major changes?
No.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the abatements and exemptions as outlined.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Oh, yeah. Oh, a motion to adjourn our BOE meeting?
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Now, we'll go back into our. Commission meeting. Looks like.
This one, Chrissy.
I am Chrissy Bennett, the Commission Secretary. I've put together the holiday schedule, the meeting schedule, and the landfill. Holiday schedule for 2021. Did you have a chance to look at those?
Did you guys have any questions on it?
There's a few holidays that fall on the weekends, so they got moved around a little bit.
Yep. Now, it looks same as last year, just a day later.
It is, yes.
Okay.
The only thing that I looked at was possibly the November when Mike conflict with UAC again, so we'll take that when it comes. If we're still available there in person. So other than that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion then.
I'd make a motion that we approve the county holiday schedule and the landfill holiday schedule and the 2021 meeting schedule.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, our second item is the Predator Control Contract. The ranchers have decided that they do want to participate this year, and I think it just needs your signature.
Okay. All right. So we just need to approve that Contract 2061? Okay.
And I'm assuming, I mean, it's just a one-pager that Steve's reviewed this. It doesn't look like much to it. It's just the amount and dates. So, okay.
Yeah, it's the same from the last couple of years, Joe.
Yeah. I'd make a motion that we approve Predator Control Contract Number 20-61.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Scott, second by Mr. Summers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hey, thank you, Chrissy. Okay, Commissioner Scott, you got Statehood Day celebration.
Yeah, let me see if I can pull up the email here. Okay. This came from Catherine Potter. And next year is the 125th year of statehood. And so in conjunction with the Department of Heritage and Arts, as where, as the Governor's Office, they want to do a simultaneous fireworks show on January 4. And so they want to have it in every one of Utah's 29 counties. And so what we need to do is we need to figure out a suitable location and how to go about that. Atlantis Fireworks is the approved pyrotechnician, and they will provide the pyro itself, a licensed technician, local permits and insurance. And so they cover everything. And so what we need to do is we just need to figure out the other location that we're gonna do this. And then we need to let them know as soon as possible, so that they can get this done, because we're literally only three weeks out now. So we just got this letter, it just came within the last week. And so as soon as it did, I forwarded it on to Jesse. But I don't know what your thoughts are, but to me, I mean, it kind of just makes sense to do it at the fairgrounds.
That's my thoughts.
I think if they set it up right in the middle of the rodeo arena, I mean, that kind of makes sense to me. I mean, from a emergency management and from a fire safety point, Mark, I mean, Corey would get him involved, but I think that just kind of makes sense. It's dirt there. There's not much that could burn, and these guys are. So unless there's another idea, my suggestion would be that we just put a letter together to go back down to Jill Love and Catherine Potter, and just tell them what our thoughts are and to arrange the details.
Sounds good. Do we just need to let Tremont City and Corey know, Fire Marshal?
Yeah, and there may be fireworks done in Brigham City as well, because I think that they contacted some of the larger cities that were geographically located. And so Brigham may be doing them at the same time.
Well, that's a good idea. I'm up in Tremont now, too.
Yeah, I heard rumors, so. All right, well, I would make a motion that we plan on doing our 125th year of statehood celebratory fireworks at the Buckstler County Fairgrounds on January 4.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Chrissy, will you let Corey and Mark and everybody know so we can get that plan?
Yes, and are you gonna, are you just gonna settle up? I don't have their information.
Okay, I'll forward it to you right now.
Oh, okay.
And then all we need to do is just send them a letter back saying, hey, thanks for thinking of us, excited. January 4, Buckstler County Fairgrounds. So.
Thank you.
And I agree. I think Corey probably ought to be the point person on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so. Okay, great. Looks like we have an addendum to the Mental Health Services Contract 2062?
Yeah, let me see if I can find that quick. Okay. Yeah, what this was, is it was just a very slight adjustment in the amount, like the $900 that Tom was talking about. And so that's all it is, is just a little bit different that we reimburse. So our share of the amount for the tri-county. So I'd make a motion that we approve the Mental Health Services Contract 20-62, the addendum.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great. And then we're to the Bear River Region Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan Resolution 2025. Stan, you're listed on this?
Yeah, Zach Covington from Brag's been working on this for probably, I don't know, two years.
Yes, we did.
And this is something that we have to pass and adopt, so in case anything ever happens with FEMA, they can come back into this pre-disaster mitigation plan. And it means a lot of whether or not we get funds or not. And since we've been having such a great time with disasters here, it was a good thing that we were able to get that done, and we just had to have it adopted ASAP. They just sent over the PDFs, so it should be able to be put in, Marla, to the minutes. And if people want to go in there and look at that plan, then they can do that. We just need to have it adopted by, I think it was January 4, so. It's a good thing we got it in. Got it done. We, yeah, it's on their website, too.
Do you know what it is?
He just barely sent over the PDF, so I'll have to forward it to you if you don't have it.
Thank you.
Marla, I sent that to you. You should have it in your email. Marks in your email.
Thank you.
So we just need to have a motion to adopt it. I make a motion that we, unless you guys got something else, do you got any questions?
No.
No.
No. I think we're good.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the Resolution 20-25, Pre-Disaster Mitigation.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Janica? Is that the warrant registered?
Do we have a call section?
No.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Looks like just a matter of getting this stuff signed, then.
Marla, how long have I got to put my John Hancock on those?
When can you come in?
What's this one for, Kelvin?
Well, it's a matter of, not sure you want me there, so.
Okay. I didn't look at the little notes down there. I was looking for something up top.
Let me look through real quick and see. I think it might just be the minutes, and that we can scan it, and then you can sign it later, and then you can re-scan them.
Okay.
The budget ones, I do need to just sign those as well.
Okay, how many days?
Are you scared?
Yesterday.
No, he's staying away.
Of course, I'm sick.
Low profile.
I'll call you later.
I just texted you.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Nobody has anything else?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
You gotta be on the road, don't you?
Yeah, I'm heading out right now.